Morning, everybody. I'm going to call this April 5th, 2022 Perrysburg Board of Education Work Session to Order. Mr. Drew, if we can start with a roll call, please.
All right, Ms. Larimer.
Here.
Mrs. Eubank.
Here.
Dr. Reford.
Here.
Mr. Pullman. Mr. Bennington.
Here. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with our safety briefing. Perrysburg Schools welcomes you to the Commodore Building, and we thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education Work Session. We care about the safety of our students, staff, family, and guests. Please note that there are exits on both sides, the east and west sides of the cafeteria. In case of an emergency, an AED is located just outside the cafeteria doors. You are located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perrysburg Schools. So with that, we've got a relatively light agenda this morning. If I can have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Reford, second to Ms. Larimer. And roll call, please.
Dr. Reford.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. And the agenda is adopted. Okay, we'll start out with the superintendent's report. Mr. Hassler.
All right, thank you, and good morning. Let me pull up the presentation. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time this morning, and we do have a new projector system that we're installing. So it was working fine the other morning, and so this morning, you know, about par for the course, the other two are down right now. So I know that they're tweaking that. But anyway, you can see it's a little more vivid than what we're used to. So we don't have to kill the light. So that's good. So we wanted to talk a little bit about enrollment from two angles. One is just kind of give an update on what's happening with enrollment. This is the time of year where we begin to register kindergarteners across the district, and that's always an exciting time. And just to give it a little bit of framing, we're welcoming the class of 2035. So I'll let that sit in for a little bit and think about what the implications of that. But it is an exciting time. We have students and families here in the Commodore where we do all the registration. The staff here does a great job of welcoming this next graduating class of 2035. So with that, we start to gather some numbers. So this time last year, we had 343 kindergarteners registered for the fall. And, you know, today, we have, well, we have approximately 364 kindergarteners that are registered for the fall. So from last year to this year, year to the date, we're looking at an increase of almost 20 students. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a whole classroom. When we advance, right now, today, we have 374 kindergarteners in our buildings. So I want to go back to a slide where this time last year, we had 374, and today, we're sitting at 374. So we do add students from over the summer and, of course, into the school year. So we know the number that we're sitting on today will see an increase. When looking at the history, and you've seen this slide, this is the September enrollment count, you'll see that when school began, we were at 367. The year before was 315, one of the lowest, looking back. And part of that, I think, is coming out of COVID. Some families elected to keep their children, you know, at their preschool provider another year, or if they offered kindergarten there. But we, you know, we're starting to see that uptick. Certainly, if you look at the numbers on the far right, those grade levels, that's where those students are now. So that 315 is now at 359. So we've seen those students, you know, start to come back, and we think that's the COVID effect. And of course, 2019 and '20, and '18 and '19, we had 394. We're now at 442 and 430. And of course, 351, now seventh grade, 417. So you can see this accumulation of students through the grade. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. So those are the numbers of the students that are actually sitting in our seats this morning. And so we actually go in and count those students, and they're actual bodies that you can touch. So when we get the question sometimes, what is our enrollment, we wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the different enrollment numbers that folks can find, either like we just reported here in the district from September, looking back year to year. And then when you begin to look at some state data, what those numbers are and how they're different. So you think it would be pretty simple, but of course, we're in Ohio, and things aren't always that simple. So I want to introduce you to Jackie and James Jackett. So they are students at the high school, and they spend their entire day in the school building. So they're there from the first bell to the last bell of the day. And when we take a look at Jackie and James, they are students. So today, Jackie and James, when we report to you our enrollment for that class that they're in, they're counted as students for Perrysburg Schools. But it does change depending on, you know, how you choose to count them and how the state reports that information. So what you're using the enrollment for counts for per pupil funding, and then teaching and planning for those things certainly factor into how ODE counts that. So Jackie takes one College Credit Plus course. It's taught by one of our teachers at the high school, and again, Jackie never leaves. She enrolled as a new student in December, and she is reported to ODE. She doesn't count as one full student. She counts as 86% of a student. So when that number gets fed down, and we count her at this meeting as one student for Perrysburg because she's in a classroom, she sits in a chair, you can touch her, you can talk to her. The state sees her as an 86% student. So when they report that number, it changes. You can see how there's a difference that begins. So James Jackett is enrolled in one of our satellite courses at Penna Career Center. We host a couple of Penna classes that are right here in Perrysburg. Our students have the benefit of getting that quality education. They don't leave Perrysburg, and it's taught by a Penna teacher who's housed in Perrysburg. And then James also takes two College Credit Plus courses here in the high school. So again, never leaves the school, has a parking permit, eats lunch, eats lunch, and is in the school all day. And that student, who's with us all year, counts as 58% of a student, just to give you an idea in terms of how the state reports that. So we see two students today that are in our buildings. They're there all day. They're eating lunch. They're doing activities. They're engaged with where we are. When we count, when we ask the question, how many students are in that class, we give them a full number, but they don't count as full-time students for that year based on ODE. So we wanted to take a look at how that plays out. So if you look at the detailed school funding report, it's also known as the SFPR, and it's what where payments are based on. The average daily membership for Perrysburg is reported as 4,949 students. From the same department that does this, they have the state report card, and they report we have 5,163 students. And then when you look at the district profile, the CUP report, they report 5,370.42 students. So you can see how it gets confusing when people say, okay, I just watched the board meeting, and we just heard the board present that there are, you know, 444 students in that grade level. But if I were to pull that grade level and dig into it, is it 460? Is it 470? Is it 400? How does that happen? So depending on which report you're pulling, there's different ways that they count those students, which makes it very confusing for the public. So I'm going to go very quickly through each of those. So ODE's Total Average Daily Membership, ADM, is displayed on the CUP report, and this is a full student count residing within the school district boundaries, or non-resident students are eligible to attend the district. This number includes students that are in K-12, including special needs, career tech, as well as JVS community schools, and those who participate in open enrollment that leave. And then they actually count the numbers of Perrysburg students, and then extract that through the year, and then they balance those, and then that is what they use for state funding. Prior to 2015, state funding for purposes counts students that were taken during the first full week in October, and that is how they came up with the numbers. So I want to highlight that for a moment because when we look at our historical numbers, and I have a slide shortly where I'll show you the historical numbers, we've done this weird thing where we've actually counted noses of kids that are actually in our buildings and in our classrooms. And we do that at the beginning of every year. So when we show you a chart that shows the growth in the district, we've used the same way of counting students because those are the students that are sitting in our building, in our chairs in front of us. The state has changed over time how they've calculated from October count to now what they're doing with the ADM. So it's hard to go back using the state data to get that same number because there's been some variances. So the numbers that we share in terms of growth and projections, I think, are really on target because, again, we're actually counting those students that are here. When we look at the enrolled ADM, which is the SFPR report, we receive two payments each month based on a snapshot of that enrollment. So we pulled a percent of the time report from Power School. That's one of our systems. Parents know that name. Not only does it provide access to grades and other types of information, but the state is able to pull all the data from Power School into its system. And then we have to match up that report, their report against our data. It's important to note that when the overall change in school funding that just happened, the calculation procedures at the state of Ohio this year has changed. So before that system we described where they counted all the kids that resided in Perrysburg, and then they backed out those kids, they deducted that amount from us in terms of our per pupil funding. Moving forward, they keep those students separate. So for now, those students that were deducted for those programs, there's a pool that is set aside in the state that those are reported. So that's a, I think that's a better thing because every report we could see how many students were leaving for charter schools or scholarship programs. And as you know, that was really a point of contention because the state sends us $2,000 per pupil, let's say, but then when that student leaves, the state is sending over $6,000 or more to that school. And that always created a little bit of a rub as, well, how does that work? That's actually more money going out than we would receive from the state. So that exercise with the monthly headcount now is 5,658. So that's the number of our headcount. They deduct the number of preschool students, so then we're 5,459. And then that deduction, and then the other students here, so then that number ends up coming to 5,183. So that's how that goes, and then we have to compare those. So that also, if you're withdrawing students, if a student leaves in the middle of the year, we get a .08 for that student. So, you know.
Was it when they leave during the year?
If they leave by December, let's say, there's that deduction. So as students leave school and transfer out, you know, we don't get that full credit. And when students move in, we don't get that full credit. So a district where we're enrolling new students through the year, you know, that's a full chair, that's a full human in that seat, but that number varies. So what it means is ODE funds the classroom teaching with the dollars received in this report. So now they're counting the students based on that formula, and they're refining those numbers because it's a new system. And then we'll get funding based on how many students we have in that grade level divided by the number of students per teacher. So in the elementary level, the class sizes are set lower, so we get state funding at a 25-to-1 ratio, but at the high school level, that number increases. And so for 400, over 400 students, we receive funds for one administrator, and you can begin to see how that funding model works based on those counts. So how many students never leave Perrysburg High School on a typical school day that are considered less than 100%? So this is an interesting question. So this is that, those two students that I introduced you to. So we have 273 high school students that are enrolled in one or more Penna satellite classes at the high school. So those students are counted less than 100%. So 272 students are in the high school every day from bell to bell, but the state doesn't count them. They're deducted. And then we have another 111 students that enrolled in College Credit Plus classes with our own teachers. So, and then we have 77 students who do not leave the building that enroll in classes with our teachers. Two of the students enrolled with one of our teachers, but they also leave for a non-campus class. And 32 students are taking classes at PHS, but they also leave for one course or courses at a campus. So all those students are counted differently. So when you look at the numbers that we just showed you from those various reports and say, why don't those numbers match up with what Perrysburg is saying? For those students that are in the building and they're taking up a seat, and we have to hand them a book, we count them as one, and the state doesn't always do that. So that's one of the things. So going back to 2011, our district has grown by 17% or 800 students. So think about the enrollment at HPI, and that's been added since 2011. I referred to the charts. This is our information because, again, going back, we've always counted the same way, and that is the number of noses in every classroom. The state, as I showed you, depending on which formula they're using and how they count and when they count, has changed. And, you know, 1999, they didn't have College Credit Plus. In 1999, they did vocational education or career tech differently. So today, those numbers are hard to match from report to report. But for us, this is the best way to track. And then, of course, you know, I started with this slide and just wanted to end. As we begin to track these students, as they go through their educational experience at Perrysburg, you know, we're continuing to grow, and certainly, that's a very good thing, a sign of people wanting to be here because of schools. And we hear that, especially now, you have families that are enrolling their children. It's great to hear their stories, where they've come from, why they're here. And, you know, it's a significant investment to choose where an individual is going to live, especially with kids. And, you know, we certainly are winners in Northwest Ohio when it comes to that. So, but the downside to that is what we've been working on with the strategic facilities, planning committees, is what do we do? And going back to the growth slide, you know, if we were to extend this all the way out to the 19, you know, the 1930s, we built a new high school, and that was the Commodore Building. And in the 1940s, we didn't build any new buildings. And that's the only decade where we didn't really do any growth of any kind because, you know, World War II. But we made up for it in the 1950s when we built two elementaries, the only decade where we built two schools in the same decade. But in the 1960s, there were additions in the 19, and then the high school, which is now the junior high. The 1970s brought in Woodland. The 1980s, we had an addition. And then in 1990s, we opened Fort Meigs, our new elementary. And the 2000s, we saw portables until when we opened, until 2017, when we opened Hall Prairie. So that was a longer stretch where we really didn't have any buildings, but we were making do with portables. So growth is something we've experienced in the past in Perrysburg. It's something that we're familiar with. It's something that, you know, we plan for. And so we're grateful for the volunteers that are serving, and we'll continue to keep the board updated. But so wanted just to share a little bit because I know as we dig into these numbers, people ask these questions that came up at the committee, you know, people go out, do their homework, pull down the report card and say, wait a minute. And so we went through this with some of those folks and thought it'd be a good idea to bring it here and share with the board. And also, an update on our kindergarten enrollment, which is always a fun time. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hassler?
Did the fair school funding formula address this ridiculous way that they count students and don't count students?
In part, yes. So one of the things that the fair school funding plan did is we wanted to separate the way that they counted charter school students and the way that they counted students that were getting scholarships and going to private schools. So how that worked before is the state counted all of those, for example, as Perrysburg students. So all of those numbers got loaded up into our funding formula. And then they went down, and they deducted the amount that they were sending to those other schools from our amount. And then you saw that deduction, that transfer of funds. So the funds came into Perrysburg, and then the funds came out through this calculation. And it was really challenging to look at those because you're seeing what we're spending per pupil below the state average, about $1,500 less. You're looking at what the state is sending us, and at that time, we were capped. We were capped almost $4 million. And then you're looking at these dollars being transferred out. And like I said, the charter schools were getting, that money flows into the district, but the charter schools were getting a minimum of $6,000 per pupil. And then the private schools were getting a minimum of 6,000 anywhere, you know, much greater depending on which scholarship program they were on. And that was frustrating to see for school districts across Ohio. So because those dollars were ours, and then they were taken away. And they did follow the students, which makes sense that those dollars flowed that way. But when you have private schools receiving two or three times as much as what we were receiving for the state, but then we're saddled with all of those requirements, that created kind of a rub. So moving that out doesn't change the amount those private schools and charter schools got. But what it does do is it allows those deductions not to be shown. So it only looks at the numbers of students that we have in our district. It only looks at what's happening inside our district versus, you know, all of that, all of those counting. So it still is deducting, it still treats, you know, the two students I introduced you to as partial students, and I get that. I mentioned the cap, and, you know, this formula will be phased in over six years. And so the funding of all the students that we receive, we're not off that cap yet. It has to be fully funded over the six years before we can, we'll see that, you know, dollar-for-dollar match of the students that we're getting. So for every student that moves in, those kindergartners that are registered, the state sets a dollar amount that we are to receive. As the formula moves forward, we'll receive more dollars for those students that we're educating. Why was there a cap? Well, the old formula was really broken. And if a district was losing students, they were guaranteed to receive the same amount of money from the year before. And the downside to that is districts that were growing did not receive funding for all the students that they were enrolling above a certain level. And that's what caught us with that. That's why that funding was so broken, especially for districts like us. So this begins to balance that. So if you've been on the cap or guarantee, it begins to reset that amount so that it's right sizing that. And that's sometimes challenging for districts because they've enjoyed that additional funding for students that aren't there. But for districts that were educating students and not getting the state funding, it was a burden for those communities like Perrysburg. So this tries to provide a fair, more equitable, and an easier way to understand how that funding works. So it does eliminate some of that, Sue, because when you look at the old reports, you see a lot of students, and then you see all these deductions, and then you see money flowing out. It's like, what in the world's going on here? Where do those students go? Why are those students going? And so that's where we are.
I wanted to add, the word capped is not mentioned in the new legislation with the fair funding. So the way it was explained to me, there's no longer a cap. It does take seven years to get the full amount. So you're still not getting the full amount. But the word capped is not being used in this legislation anymore. But it is correct. We're not getting the full amount until the whole entire seven years. But again, the word cap's not even brought up in the new legislation. They specifically took that out.
They took it out for political reasons, but I will continue to use it because we are capped. We got funded $2 million less than what the formula said we should have gotten. To me, that means we were capped. Okay? Whether or not the politicians want to call it that, they funded us $2 million less. The same time, for the district I left, they're on the guarantee, and they get $1.3 million more than what the funding formula said they should get.
Oh, so they've got some of our money, then?
Well, most of the, recognize before the change that most of the districts in the state of Ohio were on the guarantee.
Over 300.
So almost 50% of the districts were on the guarantee because their enrollment is dropping. And so the funding was guaranteed. And it makes some sense. It sounds like it's not fair, but just recognize, when you fund a classroom, if you, the 25-to-1 that Tom mentioned ratio with the elementary, and a lot of these school districts are, for example, Title I school districts, they have to maintain that 25-to-1 ratio of teacher to student. If not, they lose their federal funding. So if you have 76 students in a grade level, that's four teachers. If you have 77, it's four teachers. It's 99, it's four teachers. So even though your enrollment's dropping, until you get to the point where you can eliminate a full classroom, you're funding a full teacher even though you're not getting funding for it. So that's where the enrollment, if you're on the other end of it, you're losing enrollment, it ends up being very difficult. And the same side of the, in our case, where we're growing, if we have 400 students in a grade level, you know, when you have that 401, you've got to add a teacher in order to keep your ratio, even though you've not had enough students really to justify that funding. So that's why growth, you're ahead of the spending curve on that. And that's why it makes it very difficult when we look at, you know, and all the growing districts have the same problem. It's the same challenge, I should say, not a problem, because you're always funding before you have a full classroom, if that makes any sense. So that's our challenge we're looking forward to, you know, going as we look ahead.
Yeah, and I think the one thing I think we have to be sensitive to because I think there's this feeling that, okay, we've adopted a new funding model, so we don't have to worry about it. It's going to be implemented over six years, not seven. But with the Bionium budget, it was put into the Bionium budget. Bionium budget is how Ohio funds its government for two years at a time. At the end of this Bionium budget, there's no guarantee that'll go through. So they have to, yeah. And we've talked about that. And so we have to go back to the legislators and say, we want to continue the formula as we have it, and we want to continue to fully fund it, you know, and add that, add those dollars so that it's fully funded over those six years. So, you know, if the legislature chooses not to do that, then there is no formula. And then we go back to where we were before, and we have to remind people of what that was. And that was, every student in the state of Ohio generated $6,020. Well, how did we get to that number? Well, we have no idea.
Go back to that blackboard cartoon that you had.
So, so, so now we can very quickly point out exactly why we're receiving the dollars we're receiving per child. And, and it's different from Randy's last district at Huron, because they, different things are happening within their district. And then they come up with a local share, so we don't get that, I think it's $7,026 or something like that. I'm not sure exactly what, but, but for us, then they calculate the property values of your community and then that's 50% and then the income of your community. And then that's applied to a formula and it says, okay, your district, your community has their share they need to pay. And that's how the state determines what they give. So they don't give the full $7,000. They give a fraction of that based on those other factors. So, so it's, it's simpler than what it was when you started with a number that really was an effect of residual budgeting. They had a number and they worked backwards and, and said, okay, then it comes out to this number. But today, it's based on what students need and, and we can pinpoint how that works. So that's one of the benefits of the formula, so.
And it makes, does make it predictable. We may not agree necessarily with the calculations, but we can put our district numbers in. We can see what is kind of expected, what our share is going to be. But, and also what it does, it ba- the, the base costs are based on state averages. So if you take a district in Southern Highland County where the cost of living, you know, for $500,000, you could probably buy, you know, 150 acres and a decent house. And, and the, and the, and the, and the income is really low because agriculture, high property values, low income. Their average teacher costs, for example, are significantly less, but they're going to be funded at the state average. So you have some, you know, half the districts in the state whose costs are higher than the base and half the district. So in some cases, it's a, you know, it's, it works out really well, in some cases not so well, but at least it's predictable. We have a formula, we can actually put our numbers in and go, this is what is expected to get. And, and the formula does take into account extracurriculars and takes into account counselors and those kind of things, so.
But to be clear, and from one of your opening comments here, you can predict, let me, let me turn the phrase a little bit. You can predict what you're supposed to get.
Right.
Even still, that doesn't sound like it means it's what we're getting.
Well, yeah, because, because the way the funding, as, as, as Mr. Jubanks pointed out, the, the phase in over six, six years. So we're getting, so you take whatever that, that, that gap is between where we were, what the formula says and what we actually got. We got 16%, 17% of that gap.
So when, when, when you mentioned the $2 million shortfall.
Right.
Cap, whatever we want to call it.
Yeah.
That's over the life of that six year. That, is that the phase in that we're short?
That's where we're right now.
Okay.
And then next year, in theory, it should be a little bit less and then less. Now with us, that's because of enrollment numbers, it's a moving target. Because our enrollment numbers are, you know, say that we, we should get more, more funding. So, you know, and, and looking ahead, that, that, that gap, it closes, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't quite, it doesn't quite come shut. Plus it's got to be funded, right? That's the other thing. And I can, I can tell you as I work on the five-year forecast, I'm assuming, I'm being very conservative, it doesn't get shut. I just, I just sense the political climate is that, that, that we'll have some gap, if you will, between there. But that's just being a little bit conservative on, on the revenue side.
For now, when the formula says we're supposed to get so many dollars, even with the phase in, are we getting those dollars? Or is there any more games being played on that?
No, no, we're getting.
We're getting what the funding formula says we should.
Yeah, there's still, the, the ODE is still working through some of the categoricals because there's transportation pieces to it, gifted. I mean, there's been some benefit that outside of the base that this district is seeing, because we have, we have a high level of number of gifted students and we've seen some funding for that. Now, it doesn't fund our gifted programs, but it's, you know, it's $160,000 in state funding for gifted is, is better than, you know, kicking the teeth, right? So, and we've seen some more transportation monies coming in. So we, we are seeing benefits from, on the categorical side. And special education, the same thing. Now, special education is a, is a double-edged sword because while they're showing us an increase in funding for special education, they're holding some of that back because of, and it's a complicated story, but catastrophic costs that. So here's your funding for special education, but we're holding some money from everyone back into this fund for catastrophic costs. Then all the districts will apply for catastrophic costs and then we'll divvy it out based on what, what's available. And catastrophic costs, for example, or I don't remember what the threshold is, is around 27 or $30,000, $30,000 per a student. So if you have a student whose cost to educate them is in excess of that baseline, then you can apply to get some additional money back to help fund them. It doesn't, I think last year we got 27%. So if you have, you know, high needs students, you're going to do a free and appropriate education for that student, whatever the cost is. And then there's a mechanism for us to get some of it back through that catastrophic cost mechanism. So the state is holding some of that back for that purpose.
25 years after Durof, right? Which was at the end of March, I believe, and we're still discussing fair funding for schools, which is still unbelievable to me. So I do have a couple of questions to clarify, Tom. So what you're saying is, so for example, before this, we would get $2,000 into the district for a student and then they'd take it out at a cost of approximately $6,000. So there was a loss to us and people, I think, have a hard time understanding how that works. You know, so they give us 2,000, but they take away 4,000 out of a budget for a student that we don't have. Okay, and then I have a question about, you know, we talk about, while on your quick list, you have 276 students on an autism scholarship. So that means we get 0% for those students because they go to wherever they're serviced. But we're still, by law, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to evaluate them, provide their IEP services. So while we get zero funding for those students, we still have to use our employees and pay them and do all of that to provide their services. And I don't think people understand that as well. Randy, I think you did a great job explaining the catastrophic cost and how much, you know, fair and free and appropriate public education for our students. They're funded at 27% roughly, but we spend way more than that to educate our students. Also, the, and I talk about this all the time, but when we say 25 to one students, you know, within those 25 students, there may be some that are on an IEP that are only in a class that have eight. So while there may be 25 kindergartners, maybe 10 of those have special needs and that's one class right there, not into the 25.
Yeah, it, it's, there's lots of nuances in, in, in that world. And just to put some numbers to what we talked about. So based on the state formula, our per pupil cost, this is the base cost, is little, is 70, $7,260. So the state said, that's your base cost for, for Perry's work, based on your ratio of students to teachers and, and administrators. And then, so the local portion of that is $5,595 and the state portion is $1,665. So essentially, and that's where that, the wealth index and stuff comes into. So the state's not a base cost and they're going to fund it based on their, their share of that, they feel, based on the wealth index. So it's not far off of the previous, you know, funding coming in. But the difference is we don't have that, we're not, that $6,000 is not leaving. And that open, that's why open enrollment in some places is a, I know a number of districts that they live on open enrollment in because of that difference. Now, the formula changes that for them and so open enrollment does not look as positive for them. But you'd have competition between schools trying to get students because I get $6,000 and you're paying for it essentially.
And then when you talk about 83% of a student, we get funded for 83% of a student, but we don't give them 83% of a book. Or 83% of a meal or 83% of a transportation, right? And I think it, and it's so, you know, it's a moving target again with ODE. Yeah, they have to ride behind the bus or they only get to reads chapter four. I mean.
And that's why we also recognize, like College Credit Plus is a, is a great program for families. And it gets, you know, I have, you know, two, two, two children who took advantage of it and started college at, you know, almost with their, at their junior level, they got, because of College Credit Plus. And so it was a nice financial package for the family, but it's being, it's being paid for by all of us in, in the school district.
Another unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Because it's required, correct?
Good program and while we don't get credit for that student, we're, we're still paying for that student.
Nothing's free.
Nothing's free.
Right, but it is, I just want to clarify when we talk about CCP, because we've talked about this before. It's another unfunded mandate from the state. While we have to do it.
Correct.
By law, they don't pay for the full cost of educating and providing the cost for a college class.
And another thing, from, from the board's perspective and you're, you know, when you, as you talk in the community and work with our legislatures, the whole, the whole idea of vouchers and stuff for private schools and, and charter schools and stuff. Well, I think we all appreciate parents should have a choice of whether to send their school, send their school, send their student. Those, those institutions do not have the same mandates that we have. My child lives in the district and has special needs, the district is going to provide free and appropriate education regardless of what those needs are. Whereas I can go down to Joe Smith's charter school, they don't have to take that student.
Correct.
And if, and if my, and if, if I live in Perrysburg and Perrysburg schools are not taking care of my child, I, I want to go to Rossford and Rossford will take care of my child, but Perrysburg's still paying for it. So it's one of those things that, I think we just got to be aware of. And, and it's, and it's in a climate that, and again, I get the choice. People want to have a choice. As a parent, I'd want to have a choice, but there, but there, there's choices. We're not all playing on by the same rules.
Those choices come with a financial cost to the district that people need to understand.
And I think most of us in public education recognize that's fine, just make the playing field level, right?
Right.
And I used to have, and, and I always have an argument with the, the priest, the local school. We were kind of competing for students and he goes, well, you just, you know, he didn't understand. I said, Father Jeff, it's great, but as soon as you have to take every student that I have to take, we can talk. And you don't have to take them, is that right? He goes, no, we choose who we take.
And they choose who they keep.
Right.
So once they get there, they can kick them out and send them back to the public school, yes.
Yeah, and whether, and it doesn't matter and I'm kind of, what their, the students' needs are or if, if they have legal issues, foster, homeless, it doesn't matter. We're going to, we're here and that's, that's, that's our job.
Well, don't I remember a story, Tom, that we had a student at St. Rose, but we had to do all the IEP work for them?
Yeah, that's, that's true of every student that's on a scholarship program. So we do the evaluation, the testing, and the schools don't have to follow the IEP. We do. And, and when we don't, we have these, these significant ODE, you know, complaints or, or mediations and to resolve that. But at the private schools, they don't. And so that, that's one of the challenges. I think that's what Dr. Refert was referring to is, is that. And, and I know that, I know that, you know, one time talking with, with Ray about, you know, why, why do we see these buses up on 475 every morning and there's only like four kids on it and it says Perrysburg? You know, what in the world's going on? And I think one of the things that also happens in Ohio is that local districts are required to transport students in private and charter schools within a 30-minute radius. And if they don't, they have to pay those families for that transportation. And that's become challenging because we're running short on drivers. And, you know, we have to make sure that we're providing that, that transportation. And, and now the state has even gotten a little bit more rigorous where if you're not able to, to complete that, you can face fines as a district. They'll withhold your funding if you can't commit to those bus routes that you started the year with for private and charter school students. So, you know, in Ohio, essentially, we have three publicly funded systems. We have the traditional public schools. We have charter schools, which have always been publicly funded, schools and, and private schools. And, and I say that because the amount of revenue that is state revenue that's flowing into the private schools is a significant amount. We talked about what ours was $1,600, was it? I forgot what you said. $1,600 from the state. But in, in the private schools, when you look at all of these different programs that are funding, those numbers are between four and seven or $8,000 for many of the area high schools here in, in Northwest Ohio. So I don't think the public realizes that. In those schools, and I'm friends with a lot of those, the folks that run those schools, and they do a great job. And I respect what they do and I'm glad that they're there. But they need those state dollars. They can't survive without those state dollars. So the idea of, you know, we should just cut funding from all of those private schools, I don't think that that's a, a good answer. Funding from all of those private schools, I don't think that that's a, a good answer. I think that would hurt kids. But I do think it's surprising to see the amount of money and how much those schools are supported by public dollars. And as Randy pointed out, you get into a question of, well, why do we have to jump through 13 hoops from the state and we're only getting $1,600? And they're getting three, four times that amount and they don't have to jump through any of those 13 hoops. So I think that's probably the next conversation because accountability is important. And, you know, we have public meetings and we're showing our numbers and our books and everything. And the amount of revenue that's flowing to those schools, where is that accountability? You know, I, I went to a private school. My mom and dad made the decision to send me and a brother to a private school. My other brother went to a public school. And, and he was, turned out the best of all of us. So he's also a superintendent, but he's a golf course superintendent. So graduated from Ohio State and that's the right kind of superintendent to be these days. And, but, you know, my parents sacrificed to, to do that. Today, my, my mom and dad would never think about going to their neighbor and knocking on the door saying, we want to send Tommy to a private high school. We'd like you to pay for that. But today, that's kind of what's happening with these programs. So it has changed. It's an entitlement and, you know, not to say that it's a bad thing, but I think it's something that as that pot is growing for those schools, I think as taxpayers, there's just, it's a fair question to say, what are we getting on that investment? So, but I think taking it all away would be bad for Ohio. So I think it would be bad for the students at St. Rose and, yep, so, but, so it's, it's tricky, so.
And I think, and, you know, part of the whole point too is that as a legislative body, I mean, you have influence with legislatures. You know, Tom and I advocate for as best we can, but we have a little bit more, we have a vested interest in that. It's part of our roles, whereas as board members in the community, I mean, you're not doing this job because of the pay. So, and you have a different perspective and I'm sure, you know, legislature, legislators would like to hear from your perspectives also. So I just encourage you to be, be active as you can. And, you know, I think we all have to, we're all in this together, you know, across the state. And we're going to do the best for the Perrysburg kids, but what ends up being best here, I think, rolls.
It's discussions like this that always interest me. Teaching algebra to freshmen, algebra II to juniors, how confusing that number can be, alphabet soup. Yet we talk about numbers here on enrollment. We talk about support from the state, support from local taxpayers on school districts. No wonder folks in the community don't understand. It is confusing and it's, it's hard to unravel, but I appreciate what you guys are doing and the information you bring forward.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's nice to sit in between both of you and know that not only do you understand it, but you. You're taking leadership positions at the state level on the Fair Funding Act. You're going down and, and testifying at the State House for the various programs and needs and doing it all as, you know, more than alluded to with the mindset that it takes all of these different educational institutions. Because every child is different and public parochial charter all work in a different way. But advocating with the mindset, level the playing field on accountability and transparency and what is needed to, to get those funds is important. So please continue to do that mindset. Nice reminder for this board to give that support and to do what we can at the legislative level and, and in the community to get that message out. Anything else on this topic? I mean, great discussion.
Started out as a not-so-simple discussion on headcount turned into a bigger discussion on timing.
Just everything revolves around enrollment, just so you remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it goes back to the last presentation with EMIS. We have to have somebody who's really good to count those students because you can see how much goes into it. So we appreciate Kathy.
If you want to have your heads spun, have, look at an EMIS report with all the coding. You don't want to.
Pull you back before we get into a whole nother subject again. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haasler. So next item on the agenda is a consent, a consent agenda covering items. So, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, covering items five and six on the agenda. So, I would like a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Pullman. Ms. Larimer. And Mr. Durer, roll call, please.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Dr. Ruffert.
Yes.
Mr. Beddington.
Yes. Item seven, now time for board discussion.
I just have a couple of things, and one you may not want me to bring up today. But the first one is, I'm not sure if you saw the CDC's latest study on teen mental health. If you haven't a chance to look that up, it's very informative, again. Just, again, puts an exclamation point for me and for this board, for the district, for what Mr. Hostler and the staff's doing, for the mental health issues that we have in our own district here at Perry'sburg. And having serving on a, another board, the National Football Foundation, working with mental health and a new initiative, we've began to start working with other professionals in the mental health area, learning, again, what our teens are going through, what they're experiencing, what families are experiencing. Again, I applaud the decisions that we've made for school counselors, high school counselors, for hiring psychologists, socialists, sociologists. It's important that we continue to do what's best for our kids. And I just check out the stats, it's disturbing, and I'm glad we're out front and doing things that we need to do for the mental health of our students. The second thing I have, and Mr. President, Eric, you might want me to wait till the next meeting, but we didn't report on personnel last, but a topic did come up on OTES 2.0. If you like, I can wait till our next board meeting on Monday, which is down the road. But it's a report that we did not give because we had a meeting right before our evening meeting on Monday. Would you like me to just briefly give something?
Yeah, please, if you're comfortable doing that, sure.
Just a couple of things. One of the things that OTES 2.0, you perhaps have read about that and heard about that, evaluations for our staff ceased the last couple of years with the pandemic because they just states that you don't have to have the evaluations. But now, they're back again and there's a new style, a new type of evaluation. 2.0 is what they're calling it. Unfortunately, it's time-demanding of our principals. It's taken a lot of time in addition to what other things are taking their time, which is being a building principal. So, there, before the state ceased evaluations, we had help. Our building's principals had assistance from other retired assistant principals or principals, whatever it might be. And there's been requests now by our staff, again, to look into this, to help the principals. For example, just take the high school. They're averaging 25, 20 to 25 teachers to evaluate. It's three and a half hours per evaluation. It's about 117 to 130 hours just to go through the evaluation per one teacher. And I can give you more statistics if you like, but the fact is, it's overwhelming to do the evaluations and still be a building principal. So, they're just going to propose something to the board, to Mr. Hostler to the board, how they can seek some relief with the evaluation process. So, that's coming down, perhaps in the next couple of weeks to the board. And information, more costly information and more statistics, if you like. But the fact is, it's out there, and I, Dr. Ruffert, you and I sat in that meeting if you want to add something to that. But I do see the need that is there to help our building administrators. Dr. Ruffert, is there anything you...
Agreed with the change. It's just, it's so overwhelming our time-wise for administrators to do the evaluation and then still be the instructional leader in the school on top of everything else that they need to do. There's only so many hours in the day, and we need to figure out a way to help support them. And that's not just in Perry'sburg, that's across the state.
So, what's TPS doing?
We also have a lot more administrators than in an elementary school. We had that discussion as well. With 500 and some students, there's one principal. And in other school districts, they have an assistant principal, maybe a counselor, you know, but it's just, again, thank you, ODE, and other unfunded mandate. You know, we have to do it, but we don't provide the assistance to help complete it. So, it's a lot, I mean, it's great, the evaluation process, because it's a lot of conversation and, you know, back and forth about, you know, high-quality teaching and, you know, how, you know, the standards and data and, you know, how you're putting all those pieces of OTES into the classroom, but it takes a lot of time. And people don't realize how long it takes. It's overwhelming to do OTES before 2.0, so...
And again, we're doing a lot with less. In other words, if you take a look at other school districts, our size, perhaps, even if you look at Findlay in the area, or we've got some stats here on Beaver Creek or Westlake, some schools are comparable to us. They've got five evaluators and they have less number of students in their district. But we've got three evaluators to high school, we have more students. So, again, our staff's done a great job of doing what's required with not as much help as needed. So, if we can give them some relief, that's, they'll have some sort of a recommendation, Mr. Hostler, coming down.
Thank you. Glad we didn't wait to talk about that two weeks from now.
I wanted to say something about the last board meeting. I was truly taken aback at the last board meeting. What I witnessed was an administrator, teachers, and residents of Perry'sburg shaming or bullying someone. I'm all for freedom of speech while debating an issue, but that is not what I heard. What I heard was, "See the world as I do, and if you don't, it's considered hate speech." They made one parent's concerned speech to our board sound like something it wasn't intended to be. At Perry'sburg schools, we stand for diversity, but not diversity of thought. Are we only inclusive if we all politically agree on issues? Lastly, being respectful is one of the three foundational traits in our jacket way. Above all else, we need to respect the diverse perspective of all our students, our parents, our leaders, and our citizens, even when they are different than our own.
So, you're talking to the board, you're talking to the people that talked at the meeting? Because as a board member, I sat there and listened to citizens of this community, people who pay taxpayers' dollars, who live in this community, come up and talk to the board. I didn't talk to the board. I didn't hear anybody else in the board talk to the board. So, are you referring to the people who talked?
I'm just sharing my thoughts. I went back, I watched the meeting, I watched the meeting before, and I'm just sharing my thoughts. I can be talking to you, I can be talking to anybody. This is what I...
So, what, but why, why tell me what you're experiencing, what you feel? Tell the people who talked, the public that talked at the meeting. I'm sitting here listening to it. For the last two years, I've listened to both sides have their discussions. So, if you've got a concern about what they said or who they said it to, I would think you would talk to them. Not, it sounds like you just chastised me as a board member.
Oh, no, no, that was not, oh, no, no, no. I'm just, I just, I was processing it. I didn't say anything after people spoke, which sometimes we do as a board, we'll discuss something. I wanted to go back, I wanted to watch it, I wanted to watch the meeting before. I had a chance to process it, and these are my thoughts about it.
You know, when people speak in public, sometimes what you say is what you wear. So, unfortunately, given whoever you're talking about, when they say things publicly, it's recorded, it's in the papers, it's documented, it's heard, and we have to wear it. So, when people come and speak on either side of the coin, that's their privilege, that's their right as a community person.
Oh, that's what I said, I'm all for freedom of speech.
I don't think we can be judge and jury, I don't think I can be judge and jury of what they say. They can say anything they want, and they have. They've been very clear. We've been, you know, we're currently in court for a lawsuit. They've been very clear on their thoughts. So, if you say it, you've got to wear it, and someone comes up and wants to speak about it, I can't control it as a board member. And I think it's their right.
I agree, and I'm just saying, what I witnessed was not the jacket way. I'm just stating that. I mean, I'm just saying what I witnessed, and you may be witnessing something completely different, and you can have your own opinion about it. I'm just saying what I witnessed. And as a school district, that's why we are here, I'm just saying I did not see a diversity of thought.
I think it's good for a school board meeting that to hear everybody's side. Someone wants to come and speak to the board and they're encouraged and they're strengthened, they're motivated to speak to the board on any issue, any topic, they're doing it, they've done it. We've had more public participation in the last two years than I've been on the board the first five years. Obviously, the topics have been pretty heated, but the fact is, that's what that's for. And let them talk with each other out there about things. I've talked to everybody that talks. If I want to talk to them, I talk to them one-on-one. Everybody's got a right to their opinion. But I just, your statement just read, Kelly, I just felt like you're lambasting the board.
Oh, no, no, not at all, not at all.
I apologize.
No, no, I'm talking about the people who spoke, I'm not, yeah.
So, I just want to clarify, you said an administrator? There was no administrators. Those were all community members, from what I recall from that meeting, that got up and spoke. What they still live in the community or work within the community, but there were no administrators that got up, and even if they did, it doesn't matter because they're community members. And I agree with you, Mr. Pullman. I witnessed people finally coming in and speaking their truth, you know, and so who are we?
And people didn't before speak their truth?
We didn't say they did.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm not here to be chastised, and we could all say something about that meeting. But, you know, if you're going to say something, we have to make sure that it's truthful also. And so, I don't recall any administrators.
I think Robin Laird is administrator.
Actually, she's not. I believe she's a dean of student, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that a teacher in our union?
Yeah, she's, yeah.
Retired, former person coming back to help in the teaching union.
If I wanted to leave this seat right now and go up to that podium, I could do that, right? Am I wrong?
Absolutely, freedom of speech.
As a community member, as a resident of this community, if I wanted to go up and talk about something off of this seat, I could do that. So, if a teacher who's in the trenches, or Mrs. Laird, you brought up her name, who's in the community, who wants to speak, that's their entitlement, their right as a community member.
That's why I say, I'm all for freedom of speech, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So, this board is going to continue to welcome all public participation. It's going to be set with the simple ground rules, that we're going to do this respectfully, that comments are going to be made to the board and not to individuals. That's what I feel happened, for the most part, at the last meeting. I've sat through other meetings as a board member, not even this year, not even last year, in my six or seven years on the board, where I've seen a lot more vitriol in some conversations on a variety of topics. We deal with emotional stuff and we deal with kids' educations and people's lives. And the community needs to hear that. But again, it's going to continue to be respectful conversations. Again, that's what I think happened. Your opinion, your perspective is noted, and we'll do more public participation in the April meeting.
Thank you.
Any other, any other points for board discussion? Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Larimer.
Yes.
Dr. Ruffert.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Beddington.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.